Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for Easter. Thank you that you're risen, that you give us hope. And everything that we trust and believe in goes through you. Lord, just thank you for this group here today. Thank you for the members of our audience here, the community that are here because they care about Montgomery County. Thank you for their staff and this county commission and just help each one of us today make decisions that's in best interest of the entire Montgomery County. I do this in your name. Amen.
Today, we will hear from Chief Deputy District Attorney Azzie Oliver in the DA's office, Deputy Administrator Kendall Anderson, Attorney Terry Reynolds with Levitate, Ms. Erin Mitchell, our 2024 Distinguished Young Woman of Montgomery County is here to visit with us, CEO Doris Crenshaw with Southern Youth Leadership Development Institute, and the State Opioid Coordinator, Debbie Metzger with the Alabama Department of Mental Health. Kristy Thornton from EMA is also here. And before we go over the items to be considered during the formal session, I'd like to ask her to go to the podium and introduce her new deputy.
Spontaneity is the key, right? No two days are ever the same. Thank you so much for working with me as I've taken emergency management, I think, to new heights, and I'm leaving it in very capable hands. I'd like to introduce to you my Deputy Director, Mr. Wade Lyles. Please make sure before you leave, grab a card from him. He is doing amazing work for the volunteer fire departments and trying to make sure that we bring them into a tighter cove with emergency management, all things we do, not only in the city of Montgomery, but Montgomery County. So I just want to tell you, thank you so much for all that y'all have done and all the help that y'all have provided us over the years.
Well, Kristy, congratulations on your announced retirement from the city of Montgomery, from the EMA, and very excited about your next endeavor. I don't know, can you share what? Nope? Okay. Can you share with that? Never mind. I'm still very excited about the possibility of your next endeavor, so. But thank you for what you've done. You've been an absolute wonderful director. I've seen this lady on Christmas morning at 5:30 in the morning cooking breakfast for those in the warming center where she had stayed all night. I don't know if that's part of the job title that you had, but...
It's not.
It's not. And, but she's done that over and over again. You retired from the police department previously, and you've just been absolutely wonderful. So, thank you for all you've done.
Well, I hope that I've brought in the right guy. He has military experience. He has worked in state emergency operations centers in Florida as a liaison for the military, working through evacuations with Hurricane Irma. He also volunteered with us this entire winter at the warming center. So, he's very familiar with the operations that happen to go there. And currently, the therapeutic recreation center has been moved into that facility. So, we pray that we don't have any bad weather, but we know we can co-locate if we still have to use it as a safer place of shelter.
Director Thornton, I think you have served the Montgomery County EMA during arguably one of the most difficult block of years that any director has ever had to deal with between the storms, the natural disasters, and of course, COVID. So, thank you very much. You have done a fantastic job, and you will be sorely missed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. The items that will be considered during the formal session start with a resolution to obligate funding to the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Authority to mitigate the negative impact of the pandemic. Consider reappointment of Jerry Kaiser as a board member of the Industrial Development Board of the City of Montgomery. Consider reappointment of Charles Trey Trussell as a board member of the Pine Level Water Authority. Consider appointment of Michael Jenkins as a board member to the Montgomery County Community Cooperative District to replace James E. Buckaloo. Consider an agreement with the ALDOT concerning funding for Elton Dean Senior Off-Road Trail Improvements. Consider an agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation for funding for Elton Dean Senior Off-Road Trail Improvements. Consider an amendment and first extension to the Declaration of Covenants for Montgomery County Industrial Park. Consider Declaration of Development Conditions and Waiver of Obligations. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
I have one to add, please. I thought I had already done it, but I don't believe I have. $3,500 to the Junior League of Montgomery. Yeah, let's add that, and I'll have Teresa double-check because I did already request that, but they say they haven't received it, and it was from December. So, let's add it just in case something went wrong, please.
Florence, on the request for funding that we have been submitted to the joint, there's a couple that I want to go through here. That's my child, community service programs, Hot Dogs and Heroes program. We have given money in the past, last year in 2023, I had given, Commissioner Sankey had given, and then I'd given again. But we've done it from joint, and we've done it from individuals. I'd like to ask the commission what we want to do for the Hot Dogs and Heroes this year that Commissioner Walker is being honored. Commissioner Sankey's been honored, I've been honored, Sheriff Cunningham's been honored in the past. Any thoughts on, from the joint, doing any type of funding?
Do you have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman?
Well, I recommend from the joint, if we could do five, and then we could do individually whatever we want to do.
I certainly don't object to that. I gave some already for that particular event, just because we were honoring our fellow commissioner here.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else want to do anything? If we do, any issue with us doing five from the joint?
I don't have any issue. If we do five from the joint, I would like to also do five from my designated.
And Florence, I want to do five for my donated revenue. Rhonda, would you consider doing yours either donated instead of designated, just to make it easier on the checks?
Isn't that the same thing?
Is that, that's the same thing?
It's the same thing.
Okay. All right. Donate, designated.
We just use different names.
I know, the first one, I can't even remember what the...
Yeah.
The first one...
Technically, on here, it's called designated.
Designated, okay. Well, I'm, never mind. I would like to do mine out of designated then with Rhonda.
But it's the same thing.
Thank you.
They know you mean designated when you say donated.
Designated, okay. And then the Casa, the court-appointed special advocates of Montgomery County. Last year, Walker, Singleton, Harris, and Moore-Ziegler all gave, and we gave from the joint. So, we did 10,000 from the joint, and then other people gave some money. And I'm asking, can we do 10,000 from the joint?
Who is that for?
That's for Casa, the court-appointed special advocates of Montgomery County. She came and gave us an update last meeting, community service programs.
And April is Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month, so it certainly has my, they have my support. They're doing tremendous work.
I agree. So, I supported it last year, so I support that again this year.
So, 10,000 from the joint?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you to Commissioner Walker and Vice Chairman Sankey. I think y'all attended the ceremony yesterday.
We were there.
Thank y'all for doing that for us.
Ken, can, is it 600,000? 600,000 children in the United States every year are abused. That was a staggering number. And Casa, and Judge Williams, and many other local organizations are working hard to take care of our kids in Montgomery County.
So, that total is $10,000 from joint designated?
Yes, ma'am. And I believe Ms. Crenshaw's here, but she's going to speak today, so we'll let her talk first.
Next, you'll consider bid award to signs now to provide and install graphics and lettering on vehicles for the sheriff's office. Consider travel training requests for the county commission, grants, tax, and taxing That's all to be considered during the formal session. First, we will hear from Azzie.
Good morning. Good morning, Azzie. Good morning. Thank y'all for the opportunity to stand before you. What we're asking for is a position feel request. Our longtime violent crimes, LSA is retiring, well, actually not retiring, she's moving on to the Attorney General's Office, and that is a crucial position. As a matter of fact, back in 2013, when I was appointed Chief of Violent Crimes, I handpicked her because of her work ethic. And she is leaving, so that has caused some, a little fear in the attorneys that we have there now. We do have identified someone, Tracy Selman, who used to work for our office as an LSA, as well as a grand jury coordinator. I think Ms. Rambo was, basically, her salary was 52,000. We can actually recruit Tracy Selman back at 50,000, and we're just asking for a feel request, just so we're keeping violent crimes operating efficiently.
Yeah, this position will be coming in at a less salary than what it is now.
That's correct.
There's actually a reduced, reduction in the budget, so. But y'all need somebody now.
Yeah, her last day is today.
Today, so we need her.
Yes, sir.
Any objection away from rules on that one?
I have no objection.
Thank you, Azzie.
All right. Thank you all so much.
Next up is Kendall Anderson.
Good morning. First, we have item number two, which is a bid award for food pass trays at the Montgomery County Detention Facility. Please bear with me, as this might get slightly confusing. This is a, first of all, this is a project funded by a $350,000 grant from the Alabama Department of Public Health for food pass trays in the detention facility. The original bid came in at, for 50 food trays, at 209,100. And because there was this gap between the grant award and the bid, we have reached out to the bidder based on the unit price of the food trays in the bid and the remaining grant funds, the scope of work can be expanded to include an additional 59 trays. The total cost of the project will be elevated to $349,441 for a total of 109 food pass trays. So, what will happen is, what I'm recommending is that we, the commission award the bid to U.S. Security Systems and enter into a contract with U.S. Security Systems in the bid amount of 209,100. In addition, we will request that a change order to the contract, which will come after, come later, in the amount of 103,250 to add the aforementioned 59 food pass trays be placed on the next agenda. Questions?
Do you have an example of what a food pass tray looked like?
It's a food tray pass.
A food tray pass. Help me with that one.
So, Regina, I can explain it, explain it, but I probably get it wrong.
We need to show and tell.
So, good morning. It's the food pass trays where you open the door, it's like a trapdoor, where you can safely give an inmate their food?
It's the...
You put the tray in through the doors, to cut in the middle of the door?
Yeah. You know, yeah. I see the more gentlemanly.
Okay. Well, me too.
Silence of the Lambs.
So, a lot of them in the detention facility needed replacing, and this was part of a $652,000 grant from ADPH for the mitigation of COVID in confinement facilities. So, this is the part that Kendall is talking about, is the last part of this grant and what we're doing at the detention facility.
Does that include the cost of installation of the...
Yes, sir. Won't cost the county, shouldn't cost the county any money. And I don't want to say won't. I don't like to speak in absolutes. I get in trouble.
Any other questions? That'll be next agenda.
Thank you.
Item number three, this is to consider a proposal for an human resources assessment by a human resource management company. As you all know, in the last year, year and a half, we've been discussing how to create a human resource department within the county. And so, we have received a proposal from human resources, and what they have, human resource management, excuse me. So, this next step would be for the assessment, for them to come in and work with our current departments, legal, finance, risk management, and see what pieces of human resource management we currently have, what pieces we are missing, and then to that, they would do the assessment. That's the first part. The second part would be for them to, based on what they assess, what we need, pieces that we don't have, to curtail that, kind of specifically around a person that would then come in on potentially a contract basis to do those human resources pieces that we are missing. We have already, as we discussed previously, we've already allocated for the human resource person in the budget. But this assessment is $6,900. The assessment should be completed in 60 to 90 days. And as it states in the memo, you know, this group has worked with Jefferson County, Birmingham Water Works, City of Clanton, and others. So, this would be the next step in us crafting an HR person to go towards crafting an HR department.
Any questions for Kendall? That'll be next agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Terry Reynolds will speak about the resolution to contract with Montgomery Water
Good morning. I don't intend to oversimplify this, but this is a resolution to contract with Montgomery Water and Sewer for the three projects that we've been discussing for the last several months. It's very straightforward. Contract is a very straightforward agreement, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Good morning, Ms. Reynolds.
Good morning.
Ms. James.
Yes, sir.
You know, there have been many, many, many steps leading up to this, and of course, I've been a bit frustrated, but I do want to express my gratitude that we've reached this point. But I'm also concerned that this may not look as clear as it appears to be. And I think I read something, maybe you sent it, regarding a public hearing to spend public dollars on the sewer. Now, is that a result of this swapping that we talked about? Enlighten me, please.
So, as you know, there's a constitutional amendment in Alabama that prevents public entities from spending public money on private interests. And so, this, you would have had to conduct this public hearing at the determination of your county attorney, whether you use ARPA funds or state funds. It's really a precautionary measure. It's procedural in nature. We did this with the funds for the small business program through the city. It literally took 10 seconds. But we do have to check that box and give the, certainly give the public an opportunity if they have questions about the expenditure, to ask those questions and to be answered. This requires seven days of public notice, so it should not inhibit this from moving forward. At your next meeting, I think Mr. Armstead has planned to get that notice out. So, once that hearing is conducted, you can move forward with a formal vote.
Thank you.
And this will allow us, the chairman, to authorize the contract with Montgomery Water Works to move forward with the sanitary sewer upgrades in Madison Park, Old Summer Road, and Hunter Station.
That's correct. And the contract is currently written, is for the first phase of that, which is the complete pre-construction and design. And I believe they're going in and doing the assessment of the land that will be required for them to acquire in order to get the proper easements to move forward. And so, then, once that is complete, they'll come back with the estimates for the next phase. But this resolution authorizes you to move forward with the entirety of the 8.5 million that has been obligated to this project. The city is considering the same resolution on their agenda this evening.
So, this allows us to move forward and get started.
Yes, sir, in its entirety.
And we're going to get started on all three projects.
Yes, sir.
As soon as they're ready.
Yes.
In that order, so.
Yes.
All right. Good deal. So, that'll be next agenda.
Before we meet Ms. Mitchell, we can consider item number, item number five, an amendment to the contract for inmate calling solutions for the detention facility. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions or comments on that? That's for telephone, inmate telephone or video visitation. That'll be next agenda.
Item number six is an agreement to the contract with diversified companies for printing and mailing notices for the revenue department.
Any questions? That'll be next agenda.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the 2024 Back-to-School Sales Tax Holiday, which will be July 19th through 21st, 2024.
Any questions? That'll be next agenda.
Now, we can meet Ms. Erin Mitchell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Distinguished Young Women Program empowers young women to be confident leaders in their community. By providing scholarships, it encourages women to go out and make a positive difference and further their academic career on the collegiate level. The program stands on five pillars: to be healthy, to be ambitious, involved, responsible, and... This program means so much to me and countless others that I've met on the county and state level. The program itself consists of five judged categories: fitness, interview, talent, self-expression, and scholastics. I've been blessed to be named the Montgomery County's Distinguished Young Woman for 2024, and this program is just so wonderful, and I've met countless friends throughout it. And I just wanted to thank you all from the bottom of my heart who have supported this program throughout the years, and would like to encourage those of you who are considering doing so that this is the most worthy program.
It is. I was very involved years ago when it was Junior Miss.
Yes, sir.
About 10 years before you were born. But it is a wonderful, wonderful program, and they changed the name, but the standards are the same, and...
Yes, sir.
Congratulations. We're so glad you're going to be representing Montgomery County.
Thank you so much.
At, I guess in Mobile again, it's still in Mobile? Or is it...
Yes, sir. The national program is in Mobile.
It's in June or so. When's the state program?
The state was in January.
And it's at Frazier.
And, okay, and it's Frazier. But you represented us, right?
I did.
Oh, we're so excited. Well, great. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about yourself. Where do you go to school? What grade are you in?
I'm a senior at Trinity this year, and I'm going to Auburn next year and majoring in speech, language, and hearing sciences.
You didn't play basketball, did you?
I did not.
Because we got the basketball team coming, the ladies' basketball team, coming in at 10 o'clock.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
From Trinity, yeah, so.
They're awesome. They won state this year.
Yeah.
Super exciting.
Well, obviously, you're very well-represented, our county, and we're so thankful for you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. It is quite, it's quite a grind. I've been to many of those, actually judged one time.
Really?
They only let me judge one time, and they cut me after that. So, they let me do it again, but, but, yeah, it's, I was able to witness all the hard work that you have to put. And it's not just, it's not a beauty contest, even though you're a very beautiful young lady.
Thank you.
It is so much more than that, and so, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
I would like to say congratulations as well. I know the chairman speaks for all of us, but you had one fan up there that threw up a power sign or something when you said you were going to Auburn.
Oh, God.
So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what that was all about.
Well, there's a, yeah, there's a lot of worry, go love in the, in the house. What was your talent?
My talent was a dance, a contemporary dance piece, but the recording was to, a recording of myself playing the piano.
Oh, wow.
So, it was very fun.
Congratulations.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Erin, you didn't introduce who you had. I know you got probably family that taken...
I have my wonderful mom, who's supported me for everything, and then my fantastic interview coach.
Oh, okay.
Very important.
Mom, I know you're so proud. That's so fun.
A lot of work.
It is. It is.
Good job, coach. Yeah.
Now, we can hear from Ms. Doris Crenshaw.
Another beautiful young lady.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah.
Montgomery youngest teenager.
Ms. Kim, bring that mic down just a little bit.
Bring it down. Today, I'm presenting to you the President of the Southern Youth Leadership Development Institute, Ms. Aria Williams, and her father, who will make the presentation for Southern Youth. Aria.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Like you said, my name is Aria Williams. I attend Bruton Magnet High School. I'm 14 years old, I'm a freshman, and I'm here to talk, ask for financial support for Southern Youth Leadership Development Institute. Southern, Southern Youth is really a great program in July, it starts in July, no, wait. I'm sorry. It starts in July, and in July, we do a film program where normally Ms. Tania Stewart, renowned actress, she comes to help to us, and we make a short film that's shown in June. And in June, we, we, it's the, I'm sorry, it's the other part where we normally meet a lot of great people. We came here before, we went to the probate office before. We met a lot of great people. We talked to banks to help us learn more about financial things. And it's really a great program. It really helped me. I joined this program when I was in seventh grade, and ever since then, I feel like my life has been changed. Even right now, I feel like I would have never have had this opportunity to even speak before you and represent this beautiful institute. And I'm just really grateful for this program, and I'm asking for financial support. We normally, in August, we go to, we normally go out of town for a trip. Last year, we went to Texas with Occidental Company. It was a really great opportunity. We talked to lawyers, we talked to senators, and it's really great for students, and I really think that this program helps us to become better people.
Thank you so much. Tell me your first name again.
Aria.
Aria. Thank you so much for coming in, speaking to us today. You know, the number one fear of Americans, the number one fear is public speaking, and you just did a beautiful job at 14 years old.
14 years old.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much. You are very impressive.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Adrianne Williams. I am Aria's father, and I'm really proud of her for her participation in this particular institute, institute and program. She has grown tremendously in her public speaking. She used to be very shy, she would not really speak in front of people, but she's had the opportunity to go different places and speak, and has done a great job. She also spoke at the Rosa Parks Dinner this past year, and did a tremendous job. And she got a chance to meet a lot of different people. She definitely wants to attend college, and she was able to meet some college presidents as well as other interesting people. The program really teaches them quite a bit about etiquette, as well as learning different skills in terms of becoming a young adult and being, contributing to, you know, our society. And so, I just want to say that they are a needed program that truly helps the young people to come along, and thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So proud to have two young ladies here today that make us all so proud in Montgomery County. It makes our future so bright, so thank you so much.
Well, Aria, we, we were invited to Houston by Vicki Hollup, who's the CEO and President of Occidental Oil. She gave them a BI treatment out there. They got a chance to meet astronauts, and they got a chance to meet college presidents signed with Dillard University, and trip went through New Orleans and Texas Southern. And I just want to say that this is a very unique program. And I think one of the major things that we provide in this program is access to... is access to people who can help them guide their lives. And they're very, very much engaged with these young people. Last year, Wells Fargo was with us for a week, and they learned everything about the bank, investing, and that sort of thing. But we didn't bring an amount that we want to ask the commission for, but certainly next week, we will be sending you a letter. And thank you so much for your past support, and we look forward to you working with us this year.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'll call on Ms. Debbie, and I apologize for probably mispronouncing your name.
Metzger.
Metzger, from the Alabama Department of Mental Health.
Thank you so much for the invitation. Aria, I think I'd like for you to do my portion as well. It's even at my age and following you lovely people. It's, it's going to be quite a feat, so y'all keep me in your thoughts right now, okay? Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for inviting me to, to speak. I do have some material I'd like to offer to the commission, if I may, just to support. So you have opened the door for something we have been desirous of for a while, and that's the opportunity to speak with commissions across our state. I've been in conversation with many who are aware of the opioid funding that's come to our state and the enormous task that our commissions have and municipalities have to decide how to use these funds appropriately. And so, my hat is off to you, and my applause is thank you for inviting us because you are the first that I've been made aware of in our, in our department of people actually seeking out guidance on how to use these funds. As these funds come into our state, there is enormous concern on the need for strategies to ensure that the funds are used appropriately. As you know, from many of the previous reports, our state chose to go about getting this funding differently from most in the country. There was only one other state, I believe maybe two, that opted to pursue funds for the misuse of opioids. And going into individual settlements with pharmaceuticals allowed us to, to have a little bit of an advantage financially. So those were wise choices made, and we continue to see the unfolding of that as these settlements are decided. That being said, our commissions and municipalities were awarded, and will continue to receive funds rightly so, so that funds are on then, are available then on the local level. The problem with that is that many of our commissions don't know the first thing about substance use treatment and what the needs are, and how to engage or how to identify needs in, in communities. And we want to offer and make our services at the Department of Mental Health available. As the state opioid coordinator, I am especially burdened that we make sure this money goes into the right hands and that we don't repeat some of our practices in the past in using federal money or settlement monies or anything like that that perhaps may have been routed simply wrongly, simply because there was lack of guidance or lack of understanding. There are national guidelines that, that actually support the use of these funds, but we have also created state guidelines based on our state plan. And Commissioner Sankey and I discussed the opioid council report. Our governor wisely, in 2017, signed into executive order the Alabama Opiod Overdose and Addiction Council. Always have to pause a little bit because I want to just call it opioid council for, so for simplicity terms, that's what I'll refer to in the remainder of my presentation to you. In that committee, there were roughly 52 individuals: state leaders, agency directors, treatment providers, people with lived experience, number of individuals who then became part of a committee to oversee the state plan. Out of that particular group of individuals who oversee eight subcommittees or standing committees, those standing committees have since 2017 worked tirelessly to identify what the needs are in the various eight areas that were identified. Remarkably, in 2024, that state plan is as relevant now as it was then, which speaks to quite the wisdom and guidance that, that crew initially had to, to pull that group together and to comprise that council. Those eight standing committees include treatment and recovery services. It includes a group that, a committee that works specifically on data and collecting data across our state, and how to get the best data to make decisions on treatment services as well as funding. There is a law enforcement committee that looks at how our law enforcement individuals are impacted by substance misuse. There is a rescue committee that looks at how do we specifically use harm reduction measures to reverse overdoses and to address head-on the overdose issue and problem in our, in our state. And as most of you know, sadly, Alabama is one of the top in a lot of the wrong ways. We had the highest over-prescribing rate. We had the highest death rate in the country in 2017. And we've continued to have very high numbers, although those numbers are remarkably better. We also have a community engagement committee, which Commissioner Sankey and I discussed briefly on the phone yesterday, the role that that plays in identifying ways that the community can best be impacted based on the needs of that individual community, and how important that is that we recognize, not only from, from the vantage point of providing equitable services, but that we be very prolific in how we distribute and, and get services out to individuals as well as overdose reversal agents like naloxone. There's another committee that specifically addresses the PMD, the PDMP, the prescribers and dispensers. They are also tasked with educating our professionals, our medical professionals in our state, so that they are fully aware of substance misuse and substance disorders and how to treat individuals best. Sadly, we had, that, that was an area that we need, we lacked the greatest education. Our medical providers are awfully only, often only provided two to five to maybe 10 hours of training in substance use disorders in their training. And that's, that's, to be such the health crisis it is now, we felt that that definitely needed to be something that was addressed. So the alloho.org website was created to provide education for our providers in the state.
Ms. Metzger. Metzger. Yes. First of all, I want to thank you so much for taking time to speak with me and to, to attend this meeting, to just brief the commissioners on the governor's council on opioid abuse. And I told you, I was particularly interested. Let me just say this, the sheriff was, our sheriff, Sheriff Derek Cunningham, was part of the law enforcement committee.
Fantastic.
And so, he's always engaged and involved. And I was particularly interested in the community engagement piece. And hopefully, and I know we, we need time to read this, my fellow commissioners, I read all of it during my research and was, was not aware that the governor had to actually put together a council on substance opioid use. Started in 2017, I believe, as you said. And so, we're grateful for the work that all the fine people that make up those various subcommittees have done. And we hope that you would be available so that we might call upon you as we look at how best to spend the resources that we receive from the opioid settlement. And so, I don't know how much more you have to share, but I just wanted to take the time to say thank you for coming and thank you for your willingness to be available as a consultant, for lack of a better word, as we talk about how best to spend the resources that we've received.
Absolutely. And the only other two committees are the workforce, which we talked about, that being certainly a concern for Montgomery County and the maternal use in child health. So those are, that's the work under which a lot of the council operates. And out of that, we can look at specifically how to address the needs in your, in this county specifically, whether that be through needs assessments or looking at the, the recommended best practices for the use of spending of that fund.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome.
Florence, is that all?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask Terry Reynolds, if you could come back up, Terry. I want to address number three on our formal session, because I know we have a, a large group of volunteer firefighters here today that probably have some questions about that one. I know it came up in the association meeting last night. Is that, was number three the right number? About the proclamation for the... Before you start, I do want to say there's not a finer group of people in Montgomery County than the ones that are involved in our volunteer fire departments. Very much like Christie, we spoke of earlier, these people are unbelievable. They volunteer their time, they put theirself at risk, they answer the call for all our residents to help protect us. And I'm a very, very big supporter and very, very thankful for each of our volunteer fire departments throughout the county. We have a number of them. They're all wonderfully ran by wonderful people. And there was some, I think they have some concerns about what we're proposing today.
Okay.
And I'll give you just a little bit of history of how this came about. It's because right now, ambulance service in Montgomery County is strained at best. It's not Haynes's fault. It's not Care's fault. It's not anybody's fault. It's hard on Haynes and Care and all the other ambulance services to get people. It's a, it's an industry that a lot of people are not going into like they used to years ago. It's a very demanding, very traumatic, very tough, tough, tough job to be in a paramedic. We used to have ambulance service out of Pike Road that was housed at the volunteer fire department. And we used to have one at Snowden that covered the other part of the county. And again, it's not Haynes's fault that we don't have that any longer, but they have to have, my understanding, five runs a day just to kind of break even, and we were averaging about three. Kirk, I'm kind of on board with that. So there's no way any business can stay open and lose money. So they had to cut back. But the critical thing of it is, is that out in our unincorporated areas, there's a lot of areas that don't have ambulance service, or they have to come from Montgomery, Oak Park, wherever it is, to get to Ada and to get to Le Pine, to get to Pine Level. But not only does it affect the unincorporated areas, but when you send an ambulance from Montgomery to far south Montgomery County, that takes one out of Montgomery County. So it's a ripple effect. And so, that concerned me a lot. So we have an opportunity now through the ARPA funding to be able to try to correct a lot of that, and that's where all this came from. The Pike Road Volunteer Fire Department came to me six, eight, nine, a year ago with a plan to try to maybe help alleviate some of these problems by having ambulance service out of the town of Pike Road Volunteer Fire Department. Pike Road and Snowden both have bedrooms, showers, baths, so they can house ambulance service. It's just one piece of it today that we're addressing. There's a second piece of it, and I think that's where the confusion is, or the concern is. The piece today is basically to do a proclamation to move forward with plans to try to have ambulance service out of the town of Pike Road in conjunction with getting our ambulance service back up either in Snowden, Roland Hills, South Montgomery, the Grady Community Center. We don't know yet, but somewhere where we can house an ambulance so have service out in the county. So I apologize, I probably didn't communicate that very well to the volunteer fire departments like I could have. But again, I didn't want to get stuff out there until I knew we could do it. And then, next thing, if I go out and tell everybody this is what I'm doing, and then people are going to come back and say, well, if it don't happen, then it's just going to cause more problems. So Terry, what did I miss?
That was a very good summary, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to go through what the resolution today does and what the next steps would be. Would you like me to do that?
And I wish we could put ambulance service in every volunteer fire department. If I had my brothers, we'd have an ambulance in every one of them because somebody in my family needs it, I want to have it, and just like you do. But we can't. But if we could get service out of Pike Road to cover the Wall area, it would cover the Roland Hills area. We get it out of either, let's just say we do it out of Snowden like we used to have it. It could cover the Pitt Lala, Hopehold, Snowden, Raymer, Grady. Just trying to get them as centrally located as we possibly can. But the bottom line is, we had to do something because for the last couple of years, and again, it's not Kirk's fault and Haynes'. I mean, Kirk and I have had this conversation. He's done everything, Haynes has done everything they possibly could do, but they cannot continue to lose money. And so, we have to do something to be able to help subsidize ambulance service in the unincorporated areas, which also affects the incorporated areas. And it's done basically across the state of Alabama. We have just been fortunate here that Haynes has kind of picked that up in the past for us. But we need to help them.
Yes, and so, the, the resolution today for Pike Road Volunteer Fire Department is, is not a general, I'm looking to see who I'm talking to, but it's, it's not a general obligation to them for whatever purposes they see fit. It is for the specific purpose of purchasing an emergency service vehicle. So to advance emergency service transport in those areas that Chairman Singleton mentioned. And then, the next step after that will be to issue an invitation to bid for the remaining areas, which are mostly the western part of the county up into the northwest part of the county. And that will happen, hopefully, within the next two weeks as the city is considering the resolution to approve a transaction of sending $500,000 to the county today, in their meeting today.
And that's very important, Terry. You know, I commend my fellow commissioners for considering this. But keep in mind, the city of Montgomery, city of Montgomery is putting half a million dollars because they recognize how critical this is, and they also recognize it's going to help the city of Montgomery too with their ambulance service. If we have some help, we can help Haynes, and then it's going to help everybody.
That's absolutely right. It's definitely more than a, it's a, it's more than a city issue, more than a county issue. It's a community as a whole issue, so that we're trying to address. And then, any remaining funds, and I've worked with the executive director at the Volunteer Fire Association, who's been incredibly helpful. I'm looking to see if I see him here today, and I don't think. Okay, okay. And so, any remaining funds after that would be distributed amongst the volunteer fire departments to be utilized to assist you as you see, as you would see fit. So there would not be any constraints with those funds that are remaining that are distributed to the volunteer fire department.
In the last meeting, I went at the association meeting, and y'all had identified some equipment that y'all wanted. So hopefully, that money will be able to supply that equipment for every volunteer fire department.
Mr. Chan.
Yes, sir.
I, I was, of course, I understand the value of ambulance service in the rural area to get our citizens to the emergency rooms, wherever they may be located currently. Of course, that's Jackson Baptist in an expeditious manner to save lives. You know, no problem with that whatsoever, and no problem with the resolution. But I do recall at our previous meeting, when I saw the different communities' names, Wall, Mount Megs, Mary, Pike Road, Cecil, McDate, Matthews, and Roland Hills, I asked the question as to whether or not we had some type of agreement with these particular communities, because I wanted to be sure that they at least knew what was going on. And I believe the answer was yes, we did have an agreement with the various community listed here. At least that, that was the impression that I got. And so, when I, when I spoke with at least one representative from, from the Wall, Mount Megs, was, I think, since we read you, we read you the lines, that became an area that I represented. So I just wanted to be sure that they were, you know, made aware of it. And I was told, yes, but when I spoke with them, they had some concerns that they had not been part of the decision making.
Commissioner Sankey.
No, they, they have not been part of the decision-making because that was up to our county commissioner and the city council to make that decision. We didn't go out to people and say, hey, do you want an ambulance service? But the people in those communities that you are named will be serviced by Pike Road. Pike Road's not just going to do the town of Pike Road and stop at the town limit. No, they're just going to, Pike Road was chosen just for geographical, really, to help us cover that side of the county. Snowden could help us cover that side of the county. And then, the city of Montgomery, through Haynes or Care or whoever it is, could cover the rest.
Yeah, so.
So that's all it is.
Those are unincorporated areas, so they fall within the purview of the county. And so, there, there will be a formal agreement. And I'm looking at Chief Missaladon with the city of Pike Road because they are their, their own incorporated municipality. And then, the, but the work in those outside communities really, you know, they're unincorporated, so that's, that's under the county's purview. And I, I would say this, and we hadn't, haven't really discussed this, but if there needs to be some sort of formal agreement on that between Pike Road and volunteer fire and the county, then that's a discussion that could be had.
Yeah, and that was the first discussion, Matt, Missaladon, I had was, hey, we're not doing this for the town of Pike Road.
That's right.
You know, we're doing it for the Montgomery County, town of Pike Road, a part of Montgomery County, just like the unincorporated area is too. And the people down in Grady. And the people down in Grady and Roland Hills and Wall and Petlala, they're just as important as city of Montgomery to me as the county is. We're all part of Montgomery County. So this is just enabling us to expand and provide services that we currently don't have. And I'm just afraid we're sitting on a ticking time bomb on, we just, and Haynes again, to their defense, I mean, they are overworked, they're trying to cover Montgomery County, Lowndes County, Pike County. I mean, they're going everywhere, they're stretched out pretty much. So this is just going to be able to help provide for everybody.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, Ms. Chairman, I have no problem with it. I wish we had been able to put together a plan long time ago regarding the emergency transport. So if it works, if it's feasible, certainly I'm all for it. I, again, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would be curious as to what some of the volunteer fire department people who are here today, what questions they may have that are not being answered.
We've got a few minutes, may I have a question? I'd be glad to entertain any. Yeah, John?
I've got about a whole bunch.
Yeah.
Thank you, council, for letting me come up here. My name's John Floranoia, I'm the Assistant Fire Chief for Roland Hills Lakes Fire Department. I'm also the Vice President of the Montgomery County Association of Volunteer Fire Departments. Back in March of last year, on the 21st of 2023, says you potentially obligated expended up to $500,000 for emergency services in the unincorporated areas. Now it looks like they're wanting to put it all into Pike Road.
John, did you not just hear what I said?
I did. I'll try and explain that right now. What I've got, eighty percent of the calls that are approximately eighty percent are out of the town of Pike Road, it's not in the unincorporated areas. So trying to put ambulance services in here, Haynes and Care have been doing excellent job, they're already proven, they're already here. I think about three years ago approximately, they said they could put, because you have to have four to about six runs a day to make a profit on running an ambulance service in the whole county, if you straight line it straight out, they have about four runs a day. So they have a differential there to make it, do that, to have, you know, four, six runs per truck. So they did present to y'all about three years ago about around $200,000 that they could put it back out there. So if you took, they're already established already here, this is an unproven venture that we're looking at getting into. And every time that any money has ever been given by the county commissioners to the volunteer fire service, we get tax money from the property tax that is divided up equally to the departments as per the state amendment, number 711, we divide it out. Any other money that has come, we get $190,000 a year that has come to us for the last twenty years, except for one year, we got an extra $80,000, but it has not gone up over the last twenty years. But that money is divided equally between the departments. So, you know, you're giving the Pike Road Fire Department a revenue stream that is not being shared with the other departments. If you look at the 450, that, I don't know where the other 50,000 went when I have me I was allocating, they said they were going to divide that up. But 450,000 is about $56,250 per department, if you look at it. We had asked, you came to some of our meetings and asked, did we get you together a wish list? We're looking at adding a Zolex monitor, which is just like what's in a hospital, and the Lucas auto defibrillator, which is, you know, Zolex are 38,000, it's 13,000 for the Lucas type auto defibrillator, that's a price of like 51,000. That's what we put on our wish list, which is a little, you know, a little bit under the 450. If we're going to give that much money to one department, there will be a revenue stream for them, but if they don't do four, don't do six calls a day, which I said the straight line amount from Haynes's numbers is only about four a day, who's going to pick up the shortfall that is going to happen? And plus, in the town of, the area that's in the Pike Road Fire Department and also part of Roland Hills and part of Wall, you have the town of Pike Road. Eighty percent of their calls in that group, three fire department areas, is for the town of Pike Road. Have they been contacted? How much are they contributing? I think this whole motion needs to be tabled to further discussion or eliminated. That is my position.
John, one, the revenue stream you're talking about, if there was a revenue stream, then we wouldn't be having this meeting today. Because Haynes, Care, Singleton Amlets, John Amlets, we'd be out there doing it. But there is no revenue stream that you're talking about. The revenue stream you're talking about Pike Road is getting? They're not getting into a revenue stream. If they was, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
After they start, it'll be a charge per service, just like anybody else.
Just like, just like these private companies do.
That is correct.
How come we don't have ambulance service now? If the markets, if it's going to make revenue for the town of Pike Road and the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Department, then we wouldn't be having this argument today. I could have sat here and done nothing and just left it like it is. And now I've got all these people against me because I'm trying to provide ambulance service and I'm trying to cover the whole county. And not, if this was just a thing for the volunteer fire department of Pike Road, I could understand. But Pike Road's just part of it. There's going to be another one. It could be in Roland Hills, it could be in Snowden, it could be anywhere. But we're going to provide service for everybody in Montgomery County. That's all I'm trying to do.
Okay.
And all these other things, on your wish list, Terry just got through chat. We got money, hopefully it's going to cover all those.
Well, that's, that's what, we didn't ever know about the ambulance service. It just looks like one group area, which encompasses the town of Pike Road, you know, it looks like they are getting a larger share of what compared to the rest of.
First thing I said, I'll take responsibility for not communicating that, but until I get the approval of the county commission and the city of Montgomery, which I have really no, nothing to do with the city of Montgomery, on their decision, until I get that, we have nothing. So we could vote no today, city could vote no tonight, and we're just, we're done, we're right back to not having any ambulance service in the county.
Well, that's where I go back to Haynes and Care about three years ago, which y'all turned down on approximately 200,000. They were going to put ambulances back out in the county.
Hey, I was all for it. Again, I understand that.
And it was voted down. So I'm just trying to figure out, if you're taking 450,000 here, that would fund you over two years of putting Haynes immediately instead of waiting six months for an ambulance to show up.
It's going to subsidize, it's going to help us subsidize ambulance service in Montgomery for a few years, a year, two years, whatever it is. And then we're going to step up as a commission and keep that going. I understand that.
Right. Now, in our area, just yesterday, within an hour and a half period, I used three ambulances. So I mean, I don't see how, you know, just putting one, you know, why not have two? I don't know.
Well, again, one in Pike Road and one in the other area.
All right, how, is the funding already there for the one in the other area?
That's part of this, what we're voting on today, that you're asking me to table. So.
Well, it looks like this is all going to the town of Pike.
But that's where the misinterpretation is. So I hope we clear that up today, it's not all going to the town, it's all going to Montgomery County. Pike Road will have housed one, another area will house the other, probably Snowden because they've had the room and all that already.
But the provision just shows it's going to the Pike Road Fire Department, not there's seven other fire departments out there. So the question that we had is one department seeming to get more funding than other ones. I mean, could you have given it to, should you give 450,000 to Snowden so that they can have their own fire department? Go ahead.
Sir, the contract with Pike Grove Volunteer Fire Department, again, they are not getting $425,000. The, for, it's 425 in the contract. So the resolution says up to four, probably says up to 450, but it's not, it is not 450,000. What the county is essentially doing, sir, is purchasing an emergency services vehicle. This resolution that you have is an authorizing document. In the contract that the county is voting on, it lays out all of these details. So the Pike Grove Volunteer Fire Department is not getting 425 or 450,000 to spend at their discretion. They're getting the money, it's a one-time expenditure to purchase an emergency service vehicle. If they spend one penny of that money for another purpose, then we will get that money back from them.
Mark, where's the staffing to come from? As you alluded to, that we have, don't have staffing, do you know where they're wanting to pull the people from? Haynes and Care. Staffing for an ambulance service? Where are they going to pull the people from?
That's a question for Mr. Missaldon.
That was probably for, they've already contacted a lot of people with Haynes and Care, and so what is that going to do? That's just going to spread it out?
Well, we got, John, it's 10 o'clock, we've got to finish up here, but Matt's here and the chairman of the board for Pike Road's here, let's have a discussion with them. Doak can answer that question for you.
I still say, you know, none of the other departments in Montgomery County, the seven departments are on board with this. Okay?
Okay.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could that language be any clearer regarding where the county seeks to get up to 450,000 ARPA funds to Pike Grove Volunteer Fire Department? Can that be any clearer? Because you just, you said something a little bit different than what it actually says. I'm just curious.
What, tell me what you mean, like the, as far as the amount?
The amount, and it does say that it's going to, and again, I'm not against this, I just think they need clarity. It says it's going to the Pike Grove Volunteer Fire Authority, it says that, so.
For the purpose of purchasing an emergency transport vehicle. So, so they are putting in the order for the vehicle, and then once, once the invoice is sent to them and you guys have proof of purchase, when you send that money over to them, the reason it has that up to amount is because we don't know the exact price yet, but we know the estimate that we were given was around 425. So as soon as they get that invoice to you guys, then the county would send a check over for the exact amount of that vehicle.
And we have no doubt, again, just for clarity now, that they're going to be able to service in addition to the Pike Road, the town of Pike Road, the Wall, Mount Meigs, Mary, all these other entities, they're going to be able to serve that geographic area with the one emergency vehicle.
It's not just one emergency vehicle, am I right, chief? That you also have two used vehicles?
At your expense that you're paying for.
When would we get collision coverage?
So they're going, at their expense, they're going to be covering it too. So again, we can table this today if you, but I'm not in favor of table it, I'm in favor of go ahead and voting on this, because I don't want to wait another day to get ambulance service out in the county.
I would be concerned if I were this body, that by tabling this today, you're signaling to the city who is willing to contribute half a million dollars to this, that maybe the county is not sure how it wants to proceed. So that's just, I'm just putting that out there for consideration as you make your decision.
So on behalf of the, Matt and them, they came to us, the Pike Grove Volunteer, they came to us with a plan, and I would have been glad to entertain any plan out there, but they were the first one to get. John, one last thing, I've got to start the next meeting.
When I've looked at ambulances myself, I even looked it up, I mean, you can get an ambulance for under $200,000, 150, 200,000. So I was trying to figure out, I guess they're going to buy three of them?
No.
So that's what I was wondering about pricing, I don't know where that's from.
Well, again, you can get anything for any price out there. We're going to make sure we get something that's going to last, make a good investment. So anything else, commission? We're going to take a short recess, it's 10:04, 10:08, that's four minutes, so give you a four-minute breakfast.
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 Break.